Five thirty-one PM, call a meeting, we do have a forum. And I'll ask Paul Huntington Jr. to lead us in a prayer and a pledge, please.
So that's my head. Father, thank you for today. Thank you, Lord, for everything you're doing. We ask you what you just help us to to show Breckenridge your heart. Help us to make choices and decisions that aim to bring the community together, unity, and understanding of us to solve problems that that need to be fixed, and help us to continue to sustain the things that are successes. We thank you, Lord, for everything you're doing. Be here in this meeting, Lord God, lead us in Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
We'll go to our open forum.
And no one signed up to speak to him?
No one, alright. No, actually, they go to our staff, they sort it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We do the Employee of the Month every month, and this month, I'm happy to say that we're recognizing a staff member from our Public Works Department, and that is Ethan Hells. If you want to come on down, Ethan. So you stand a lot, sit for a minute. So he is a crew leader in our water wastewater division, and so something I can say about Ethan, he's been with us for several years, and he is always willing to do what Billy needs him to do, and he works a lot of overtime hours, and we're just really happy to have you. You exhibit the values, and so just so you know, this was a vote of all the foremen and myself, so you wanted, you know, so we just want to appreciate you and let you know that we want to keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Turn for me. Yeah, because I can't get over there, so. Okay, and at this point, we wanted to introduce our new ACO supervisor. We did have an internal posting for this, and so I'm going to have the chief come up and introduce Steve Jennings, if you want to do that, please.
Thank you so much. Steve, come on up with me here. We've been very fortunate. It's been a process looking for where we wanted to go as far as leadership within the animal control. We were very blessed when Steve came to us because Steve came to us with a with not just a servant's heart, but the desire to work in within our animals. Steve comes to us with over thirty years of experience as a leader. He's worked in budgets, he's worked with major companies, he's also led his own companies, and so just a wealth of knowledge and just a great opportunity for us to be able to come in. I mean, he's already right now writing policies and procedures. He's in the process of us going through, when we go through a porch, we'll have this stuff on, but just let you know, I mean, this is just another great opportunity where we're getting some just some really capital people. So Steve Jennings, like I said, this is this is our new animal control supervisor, and like I said, we are just very blessed and we're moving forward in a very good direction because he does present the the values that that we've always seeked in all our employees. So I introduce to you Mr. Steve.
Well, my wife and I came here four years ago. We came here originally just as a weekend place. We came to town, we fell in love with Breckenridge. It was so much like the community that we grew up in, North Richland Hills, or it was a town called Smithfield, but basically, we just fell in love one town, so it went from, I'm not going to retire for three more years to, well, we need to retire and move out here. My wife started a cleaning company, so. But like I said, we just fell in love with the community, and we look forward to working with each and every one of you, and you know, just take us from where we are to where we're going, and just a daily process, but I just really look forward to it, so.
We do have a couple of slides. We did want to give you an update on some of the improvements that we've had in animal control over the last several months.
Sure, we got just a couple of slides, give you some idea about what kind of work's been happening with animal control. Like I said, I as I led into first, we're talking about the standard operating procedures, our SOPs that are going in place. We're writing in policies and procedures. We're looking at things like intake protocols, what we're taking in. We want to continue to be consistent with with the what we're taking in. Cleaning has been a big thing because we're trying to make sure that we're being consistent, because you know, since we're bringing in all the different animals off the street, we're not always in the point where we're able to keep, you know, we don't know what we're bringing in, so we're having to make sure we keep things clean all the time. So cleaning has been a big part of it. Place just smells better, too, and I love the fact that it doesn't smell like a kennel. The researching, like I said, we're looking at vaccinations. One of the things that we're we're adding into right now is we're writing in the protocols for vaccinations is make sure when we have at risk, usually it's the younger, the pups. Those are our at-risk populations, so we're making sure that we have protocols in place where we're keeping them apart. We're we're setting forward so that we know vaccinations. We've had a chance to talk with a whole bunch of different cities to ask them, what are y'all using? What do you got? What you know, what do these costs are? So these are things that were going on. At the bottom, you'll see one of the biggest things is an increased number of adoptions. That's something we'll I'll show you the screen here, I'll show you the numbers, but our our increased adoptions is also reducing our euthanasia, and that's a big part. And and I can tell you, and I'm sure I'll say it again, but our our adoptions are largely in part to the 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 commitment that we've had from our Humane Society, their ability to come in and help us. I mean, just, I mean, we're looking at, we just had ten dogs for Friday. I mean, they had ten pups and Kathy and her people are, hey, we got a place. We've been doing a lot more of that, so our increased adoptions are coming up. We've put a lot of money into facility improvements, you know, after we had the discussion about, hey, you know, we need to get that building up. We've been a big part of that. We've we put in new dog beds. There's been a lot of work on repairing the indoor and outdoor kennel doors. There's some the doors are slide. When I first got here, apparently, they were they were the Plexiglas, and the dogs are literally just breaking through them. They don't signal whatever. So we've had a chance to do that, and obviously, with the cold that came up, that's been a big part. And Stacy and his people have just been an incredible part, you know, like I said, when we're able to get this stuff done with our people, you know, we can do it at a level where we're reducing the cost. And then we've had issues with plumbing, the doors not not securing and working correctly, and they've had the ability to come in and do a lot of the the internal work, the things that don't always get seen. We had leaks and things that have continued to get fixed and things like that. So yeah, like I said, I think the other part, the sound at the bottom, there's been a just a full all-out effort to make sure that when we grab dogs, that we that we're posting them, we're trying to get with owners. One of the things we do now is we have folders for every dog that comes through so that we have an identity of them. If we can identify the owners, we put we put together those those dogs on the on 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 those folders, so that we're able to go back and say, hey, okay, this is whose dog is, because big surprise, we're running into a lot of them time and time again. So our efforts to do that, and like I said, we're continuing to post up on our social media to show that there's a lot of owners that are getting reunited with their dogs in a really short amount of time, because, like I said, the work of us going forward, because that's a lot better for us in the long run, to get owners reunited with their dogs. So the numbers, as it shows up, some of the numbers we're highlighting here, ultimately, what we're looking at historically is we're looking at comparing the twenty-three, twenty-four numbers. So on the left, you'll see that in our enforcements, the follow-ups, these are these are times where we're going back to make contact with the owners to find out, hey, are you are you maintaining your things like we have, we have, they have to bring themselves back under control with licensing with 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 their rabies and things like that. So we're doing more follow-ups where we're going back and checking on the houses, making sure that they're continuing to stay within compliance. The warnings, you know, like I said, you know, the enforcement's important, but a lot of times, you know, the warnings are the opportunities for us to start talking to the people and say, hey, here's the law, because we find out a lot of times, people that don't know about, you know, how how they're supposed to restrain their dogs. And of course, the citations are the enforcement up at the front, and so those numbers continue to increase. Over at the right, we're looking at adoptions, fosters, and transfers. So what we're looking at, and as you see here, we have a twenty-two and then three and four. The biggest thing is, is, like I said, our partnership with with the Humane Society has just been a huge part of it, because, you know, like I said, we're we've made connections with with other entities. We're we're going out to Carrollton, and we're taking a lot more dogs out. They're getting placed. Like I said, the the Humane Society has has worked with us on getting partnerships to to get more animals out. Some of them, like I said, we have to drive out, some of them, they come out and pick up. Our adoption efforts, just on a local level, getting getting people to adopt the dogs has been another big part. And so like I said, you're seeing an increased number, and I, you know, like I said, we we're just starting in twenty-twenty-five already, and I mean, like I said, we just took ten, probably at least fifteen dogs already this year, just in a short amount of time. So so the numbers are increasing, and like I said, we're, you know, our our procedures are staying forward. So, you know, like I said, I feel like we're certainly in an upward direction to make sure that we're continuing to not only service the community, but also as a safety issue, because that's been a big part now, is we've started really working on getting vicious dogs, dangerous dogs identified, putting out owners accountable. The court's been involved in a lot more. We've got a lot more work in the court where we have more people that are going out and and the court's involved, and at that point, you know, those are dogs that they have to bring up the code, or if those are dogs that ultimately the court will deem vicious or dangerous, that will end up having to put them down. All about public safety has been a big part of it. So.
Are you, chief, were your calls up or down, more or less? People coming in complaining?
Yeah, you know, we we up we uploaded. One of the numbers we look at is calls for service. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there was about a ten percent increase, because it was like nine hundred and then nine ninety. So it was like about a ten percent increase in calls for service. The problem is, that's a different difficult number for me to really say what what those are, but but yeah, just the calls for service, you know, like I said, just to continue, one of the things the officers will tell you is our animal control's on the radio all the time, and so we have a lot more radio traffic with our with our animal control going on on calls for service, because they're they're part of our team, and so they work with the police department, they're working with with code enforcement, and so, you know, having that 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 combination, because a lot of these dog cases can be can be cases where they could be criminals, so we've been filing cases. There's also been a lot of times where, you know, like I said, animal, the animals may be one problem, but actually, the the humans are living in a bad condition, so those are situations where law enforcement needs to be there.
Well, when you come to humans, there's more of them than animals, anyway.
You know, I guess the one thing I'll tell you, when I when I first came, and we're sitting here having these discussions, one of the things I always knew is, you know, public safety has so many different variables, because I mean, just coming out and doing law enforcement's one thing, but, you know, code compliance is such a big part of of law enforcement. Animals are, too, because one of the things we find out that there's a lot of of people that are indigent, that that have dogs, that they're not taking care of the dogs, they're not taking care of persons. You know, we also find that people who are violating the law are also violating code enforcement's as well as as these animals. So a lot of these issues always come back, and that's why it's so important that, you know, we have an umbrella where we're working in. And just like I said, and as I talk about things like working with Stacy and the staff, working with our code enforcement, you know, with the police, it's just, it's a really neat opportunity to be working with with all the different entities of the fact we were out to pull the cat out of a tree with the fire department just a couple of weeks ago. So I mean, you know, it's just, it's a neat opportunity to see that, you know, all the different branches of the of this the city are in some way tangentially involved with the with with animal control.
Good improvement coming along.
Yeah, we've got a long way to go, but I can tell you, you know, the direction is definitely, we're up, and I really appreciate it. Like I said, I think I think, like I said, we will, we will continue to come in and give you updates that I think are going to be improvements. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
I want to, at this point, I want to recognize Jessica Sutter. We've been talking about this, but she has completed all her coursework for the Texas Municipal City Secretaries Association, basically, the professional organization. It's really quite an accomplishment. She's done a fantastic job. It's two hundred hours. I think you got it done a lot quicker than most people get it done. So she's really done a fantastic job. She's had a lot of on-the-job training, and I'm just really proud of her and really thankful for her being a big part of the team here at Breckenridge. So if you would help me recognize her. Have a fancy look. So they had a luncheon, and so she, you know, she walked the stage, and Diane and I went down. The next thing I wanted to do was give you guys just a grant update. There's a lot going on with our grants. And so I kind of wanted to categorize that for you. We have several actions today on that. So with the downtown revitalization, of course, that was the sidewalk and ADA improvements, mainly here, right here at Elm and Rose, but there were some ADA improvements over at Court and Elm as well, just north of the courthouse. Those have all been done. If you do remember, that grant is five hundred thousand, and when we went out for the RFP, we awarded it to the lowest and best bid, and that was a company that was a little bit at like three hundred and three thousand. And so what is on the agenda tonight is adding activity to that, and that will be paving Elm from Rose to McCamus. So we have enough money to do that. Engineers, we've got about a hundred and fifty thousand left, and so we're able to add it into that grant as an activity. We will be just as a reminder of how these all kind of intertwine. We've got our Texas Water Development program going for wastewater improvements, water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, water treatment plant, and water and sewer line improvements. So this line out here on Elm Street, the water line will be improved. We're going to wait until that is done before we come back and pave it. And so those will kind of be dovetailing together. The other thing with a Texas CDBG grant, the twenty-five, twenty-six, the target project for that is Panther and Fourth, and you'll remember, we applied for that. Last time, we fell just shy of getting that, and so this time, we're we've scored the top. So it's a good chance that we should receive that. This time, that grant is seven hundred and fifty thousand, and we already did the admin procurement, and we're doing the engineering procurement on that, and that's on the agenda tonight. And then on the one thing I want to say, and we were thinking, excuse me, we were thinking that we might be able to use part of this grant for the fire station, whatever we're doing with that, whether it's, you know, the original plan was a new modest metal building, or if we end up refurbishing after we get the feasibility study that we're doing. However, unfortunately, that is not going to be able to be applied to that building for several different reasons. But one of the things is, is that we, if you guys remember, we are our econo, our, it's called LMI, and so it's basically the status of the economic, the income of people in the city. And so it was fifty percent, and now it is forty-nine. And so that's a whole nother story, and I've talked to the is she here? There you are, all the way over the corner. Our great consultant is here. I've talked to her and some other folks on her team, and unfortunately, even though, you know, we could, we don't believe that is actually accurate, we there's no way we can fight it. It is what it is. They update those numbers every five years, and that's what we got. So that's one of the challenges. Anyway, so but we will have street improvements from that grant, and we'll look for other grants. The county is looking for some grants on their end for a fire station. We've been invited to apply for another TWD Water, Low Water Loan Assistance Fund, and so that is on the agenda tonight, and it's the RFQ for engineers, bond councils, and financial advisor, and that will be, those are due on the thirteenth, but on the agenda tonight is the authorization to apply for that grant, and that is up to about, is basically system improvements to address water loss, and that is up to about five point seven million dollars that we're going to be going for, and it's seventy-five percent grant funded, so that's pretty good ratio for us. And then the other one that's not on there, unfortunately, we were going for the splash pad splash pad grant, and we did not make that cut. We are going to be trying to redo that. I haven't heard, I've talked to the grant consultant briefly, but I haven't gotten details on what he scored low on so that we can fix that. So once we find that out, we'll try to go with that again. And so that's a grant update. A lot, a lot of moving pieces going on right now, but there's always strings attached when you get grants, but it is good for us to to get those grant funds. It really helps us out with our infrastructure here in the city. The next thing, we're going to talk about events. I just wanted to, we do this every twice a year, and I just wanted to bring Stacy up to talk about cemetery cleanup. Stacy, if you want to come up, we have that. We have a few slides up here. Thank you, guys. Stacy, if you want to just talk about what that star grant is, and we do it twice a year, and then we can talk about this one.
Yes, for for quite a few years, we do a semi-annual cleanup twice a year. The first one in February, the second one of them is in June, and it is basically to clean up old deteriorated flowers, items that are not allowed on the grave sites, and just to keep our cemetery looking nice, where we can maintain it better. Right now, we have close to twelve thousand graves out there, and we have one full-time employee taking care of twelve thousand graves.
Or twenty-six acres.
And twenty-six acres.
However you want to look at it.
Yes. On average, we do about fifty funerals a year. So each year, we add fifty headstones to that to be weededed and maintained, and it just takes us a while to get around. But next week is our first semi-annual cleanup. In January, we finished up with the Christmas decorations cleanup, and rules are on the city's website. There's some posted on the main gate as you drive in, and then when people buy grave sites, we show them and kind of try to educate them on what the rules are to the cemetery. This past year, we got quite inundated with solar lights, and our rules state that you cannot put solar lights on the grave, and so we've had to go around and take a bunch of those up. Toys, trinkets, beads, people leave everything out there, and we do our best to pick it up. And like I said, that one employee has a lot of ground to cover, and a lot of times, we'll get some of the park guys out there to help him, and there's a lot of times that he'll come to the park and help us, but for the most part, he's out there on his own. Upright headstones. If you want to glue a toy to an upright headstone, get it off the ground, you're welcome to do that. Just we cannot have it on the ground. A lot of people take flowers out there and stick them in the dirt. Then we have to go around and pick them up and try to put them in a vase that's not glass, but some type of container to where they're not scattered out on the ground. Weed eaters, whenever we weed eat, we can't have anything like that laying out there. B benches. Did you put up a slide of rules? Okay. No benches are allowed on the grave sites unless in an upright section, that bench is your headstone. Bitches come in all shapes, form, and size, and some people in the upright sections have put headstones there in the shape of a bench. But in a flat stone area, due to maintenance and due to perpetual care, benches are not allowed, and I get a lot of questions about that. Shells, rocks, curbing, none of that's allowed. So anyway, we've got a lot of stuff that we look at, but the main deal is for ground maintenance and to keep our cemetery looking really, really nice. And I'm very proud of our cemetery. In this upcoming budget, you know, I'm looking at some stuff to improve our office, possibly improve the chapel, but we're waiting to kind of look at numbers on all that. We just opened up the last section of the cemetery. Right now, we have around twenty-five hundred grave slots left, and people are buying those up pretty fast, so you know.
Fifty a year, we won't be full for a while.
We won't be full for a while, but in the future, somebody's going to have to look at an expansion somewhere. So but anyway, I appreciate that, and just, you know, if you want to come out any time and take a tour of the cemetery, and I'll be glad to show you around, but but for the cleanup next week, that's going to happen.
So for the remainder of the month, the events that we have is on the fourteenth is the last day for candidates to file for a place on the ballot. That's the next upcoming date. And then the seventeenth, city offices will be closed, President's Day. On the twentieth, again, the third Thursday of every month, we do bulk pickup. Again, residents need to they need to submit for that, and they have to do it by the Friday before. They can do that online through TextMyGov or by calling into city offices to request that and be on the list. And then on the twenty-second is the Chamber Commerce Annual Banquet. So if you're interested in going to that, get with Yudi from the Chamber. I'm sure she'd be happy to get you a ticket and get you set up. That'll be a good time, so.
Thank you. We'll go to our consent agenda. I'll ask the gentleman that they'll look at out of three, four, and five, consent approval, department head reports, month investment report, what he stands for, consider approval of January seventh, two thousand twenty-five, Redwood Commission Meeting Minutes as recorded. Discussion, the necessary action regarding approval of twenty-twenty-four annual police department writer racial profiling review report.
I'm moved if we approve the consent agenda, items three through five as presented.
Motion, second, all in favor.
Right, did we have a second?
I said this, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All in favor. Thank you. All right. We're going to open the public hearing. It's open, will open up at six PM at this this time.
And we've got Christian Baldwin here with Public Management, our grant consultant. No one has signed up to speak to this either.
Mayor, Commissioners, staff, thank you for having me. Cynthia went through kind of an overview of why we're having this public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to is to discuss the proposed amendment and solicit citizen inputs for the proposed changes to the twenty-twenty-two Texas CDBG downtown revitalization grant. The city is proposing the addition of street reconstruction, electrical improvements, and associated improvements along West Elm Street from North Rose to North McCamus. And so at this point, I will open it up to any public comments or concerns.
There was no one that signed up for it.
Say anything else?
So that you can see it? And then just, they'll just close it.
All right, we'll close then at six oh two P M. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go to our action items number seven. Discussion in necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five. Amending the city's tech C D B G D R P contract C D M twenty-two dash zero zero two-two. Performance statements to add O three K activity code. Street improvements activity to the city's downtown area.
So you'll see in your backup information, the, the budget there. And again, we're looking at the remaining budget to spend is one forty-eight, six nine two. And the engineers don't, don't have an exact O P, O P C yet, but they, they think it's going to be fairly close. If there is a little bit overage, we'd use our C O funds to cover that delta if there are any.
And there were no questions. We have a motion then, please, gentlemen.
I move to, I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh five as presented.
That's it.
Okay, motion second, all in favor. None opposed. Thank you. Item eight, discussion, any necessary action regarding annual audit for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four.
We've got our auditor here tonight, Daniel, so he will think it over and give you the good news.
Good evening, I'm Daniel Hungerford with George Morgan and Sneed. Good to see you again, here to go over your audit for the year ended September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Our auditor's report is on page one. It's a clean opinion, says the financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with purely accepted accounting principles. It's a same opinion you've been receiving. Your financial statements start on, your general, your government fund statements start on page nineteen. I just wanted to briefly go over some highlights of your financial statements. The first column on page nineteen, this is a balance sheet, it's the general fund. There towards the bottom, you can see your general fund has fund balance of one million nine hundred and fifty-six thousand. So you have a good fund balance for the general fund. The general fund had a strong year, so its cash is up about three hundred and ninety-three thousand from the previous year. And all of your funds there have positive fund balances. On page twenty-one is a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in the fund balance. There at the bottom of the page is your third lineup is the net change in fund balance or your net income for those funds. You can see the general fund again had a three hundred and ninety-two thousand increase in fund balance. Some of the highlights for that fund is your, your revenue was up about two hundred and forty thousand. That was primarily property taxes, because you had a twenty-six million increase in the values for the property taxes. But your expenses also increased three hundred and sixty-two thousand. The biggest area was in public safety because of salaries. You had quite a few more positions filled during the year, and it resulted in increasing expenses. All of your general, all of your government funds had positive change of fund balance except for the capital projects fund, but that's, that's because you spent one million three hundred and seventy thousand on capital projects this year. Next, I wanted to briefly look at page twenty-three and twenty-four. Either your, the first column is your water fund. The second column is your wastewater fund, and those are your two largest enterprise funds. They both had a positive unrestricted net position, which is the amount available next year. The water fund, two point two million. The wastewater fund, one point six million. If you look on page twenty-four, both of those funds had increases in net position. They both had positive net income for the year. Our report on internal control is on page sixty-seven. We did not have any issues with their findings for internal control, no findings for noncompliance. During the year, we, during the audit, we tested some internal controls and found that everything was working. That's resigned, we did not have any, don't have any issues to report to you. And I think the audit went, went smooth, we were able to come in and do the audit in a timely manner. Anytime we need something, they're, they're quick to hear it from us. Yes, Diane, Diane does a great job getting information for us. Now, do you have any questions for me about the audit?
I'm just reading toward last year, that, that makes everything look good.
Yes, everything looked good. All of your funds had a, a strong financial position. And we did not have any findings or issues to report that we encountered during the audit.
I noticed one thing was missing about Mayor's raise. Get that notice I sent you all?
I feel like you ask us for that every year, but we don't.
Make a motion on that, please, sir.
Do a per. On twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Second.
Motion, second, all in favor. None opposed, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Item nine. Discussion, any necessary action regarding approval of an engineering contract for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six D C D B G grant.
Well, Mayor and Commissioners, if you have all the information before you, we did receive quite a few submissions, which I was pleased that we got so many. We had some pretty strong submissions, I think. But based on the scoring committee's score, the recommendation is to select E H T as the winning proposal. And you have all that background information in your packets, the actual submissions, of course, and the, the scores themselves.
Any questions? No questions, motion?
Motion to approve. See, engineering contract as presented by.
Yeah, motion is second.
You need to authorize, you need to negotiate.
And it doesn't say authorizing who it's being awarded to.
So we need to authorize you to go ahead and negotiate a contract, agree?
And who, did you say? Did you say E H T?
Make a motion for City Manager to move forward and negotiate agreement with E H T.
Motion is second, all in favor. None opposed, thank you. Item ten, discussion, any necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three. Authorizing an application for financial assistance from the Texas Water Development Board to fund water loss system improvement projects.
Again, this is basically you guys authorizing us to go for that application for this grant. You've got the resolution there.
We move, I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh three as presented.
Motion, second, all in favor. None opposed. Item eleven. Discussion, any necessary action regarding approval of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh two. Ordering a municipal general election to be held on May third, two thousand twenty-five for the purpose of electing the offices of Commissioner, Place Three and Place Four.
All right, so as y'all know, every year, we do hold an election. State statute sets the date that the election is, is the first Saturday of May. And this year will be on May third. We are electing two positions, that's Commissioner Place Three and Place Four. The incumbents for those positions are going to be Vince Moore and Rob Durham. The first day for filing an application for a place on the ballot was January the fifteenth, and the final day is February fourteenth. If we do not have a contested race, y'all will have the option to cancel the general election. If we do have an election, then the polling places for early voting will be here at the city offices. And that will be April twenty-first through twenty-fifth, from eight to five, and then April twenty-eighth and the twenty-ninth from eight to five. After that, the polling location for actual election day could vary. As you can see in the actual ordinance, it does set that out based on different scenarios. If the school district holds an election, then they are required to hold a joint election with the city. So we have approved that the election at that point would be held at the I S D Athletics and Fine Arts Facility at six oh seven West Second Street. If they do not have an election, then we will hold the election here at City Hall as we have in the years past. And if the hospital has one, they'll hold theirs at their facility. So the only way that it would be at the finance facility is if the school actually has an election, and I'll know closer to time. And then, yeah.
Physicians currently, they're looking for people for, correct?
Do what?
And currently, they have physicians they're looking for people for, both the hospital and the school.
I'm not certain on that. I have not been made aware of what their positions are or anything. So they are supposed to notify me once they know that, once that, once we do know, there will be notifications put out in social media and things like that, in the newspapers that have the locations and everything. But for now, early election will be held here as usual. And then that, that's what this ordinance is, is just to call that election.
Move different ordinance, twenty twenty-five oh two, order a municipal general election to be held on May third, twenty twenty-five for the purpose of electing the offices of Commissioner Place Three and Commissioner Place Four.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor. None opposed, thank you, gentlemen. Item twelve. Discussion, any necessary action regarding approval of resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh four. Authorizing the application of a Criminal Justice Division grant to the governor's office to purchase new equipment for law enforcement.
I'm going to have the chief come up.
So we're looking for a grant for the body cameras for this year. It's a grant that the governor says for. Justin is writing the grant, so although I talked to the sales guy, I'm going to refer to him because I think that was one of the first thing. Yeah. No, I just wanted to make sure, I wasn't sure you said it was titled correctly.
Well, yeah, it should have been titled, uh, new body cameras for law enforcement, but, uh, new equipment still works.
Right, the total, the total grant for all of your equipment is in your background information, but it's a one hundred and thirty-seven, two four two. It will require a twenty-five percent match.
Cash match, correct, from the city, which is somewhere a little, I don't remember the exact number, but I know it was a little over thirty-four thousand dollars, but. That outfit is all with brand new, top-of-the-line body cameras with all the software, charging equipment, everything that comes with them.
This, like I said, this is, this is the, the latest, greatest. But the biggest issue we're running into right now is the cameras we have are, are, in fact, we, we, we're just down to about half of them now. And, and, and so, you know, and they're not operating under, under heavy conditions. And then the other thing we're running into is saving space, because now as, as things go forward. And the nice thing about this, this grant is this grant allows, this is the top-down price. So they've also, and a part of the price is, I mean, literally, anything happens, we just send it in. I mean, even if we run over our own dealer, it all gets in it. Not that that would ever happen, right? But, but yeah, a lot of stuff happens with these, these cameras. And they're, they're built, they're built strong, but like I said, it's, it's, it is a good deal because, like I said, this is the, the one deal. And I think it was three years they built in for us to have technology upgrade. Yeah, so, so we're, we're already set for a three-year upgrade.
And kind of like our vehicles, there's even an option for like a replacement program for the cameras after so many years too, that can be available. Pretty sure that's going to be extra, of course, nothing's free. But the cameras we currently run, we're having, we just, like you said, we just had to purchase five more in order to get enough for everybody to have them on the streets and stop sharing them. And we just seem to run through them. I mean, they're, what, six years old now? Five, six years old. And we'll order them out a year after we bought them, so.
Well, and, and you know, the fact that we're fully staffed now, or almost fully staffed.
Yes.
You mean three officers versus a full staff?
Yeah, it really is.
Move to approve them. Any questions, I'm sorry. Should plug now.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five oh four as presented.
Second. Motion, second, all in favor. None opposed, thank you, gentlemen. Item thirteen. Discussion, any necessary action regarding resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh two. Appointing members to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term set to expire February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, so currently, those members of the Planning and Zoning Board, their term is set to expire February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five. So we are looking to reappoint those positions. We have reached out to the existing members that are for expiration, and they have all agreed to be reappointed, which is great. We always love that. So the resolution you have before you is to approve the reappointment for Eric Brennan, Les Strickland, Roll Duran Junior, Blaine Rutherford, and Corey Wemberly. And again, their term is for three years, that will set their term to expire February twenty-eighth of two thousand twenty-eight.
Motion.
I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash oh two, appointing members to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term set to expire February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-eight.
Motion, second, all in favor. Opposed, thank you. Item fourteen. Discussion, any necessary action regarding the final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh one, Texas Gas Service Franchise Agreement Renewal.
So this is just the final reading of that franchise agreement before you.
Motion on that.
I move to approve the final reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh one, Texas Gas Service Franchise Agreement Renewal.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor. Aha, none opposed, thank you, gentlemen. Any information, I'm going to leave with them for the next meeting, this time. Nothing on either end. It is six twenty P M. This meeting is adjourned, thanks all of you.